Hello. So I want to give a big welcome to the community members and also acknowledge the COB board members who are joining us this evening for the Community Oversight Board's public hearing on our policy advisory report for the use of force consent decrees. I'm Jill Fitcher, the Executive Director of the Community Oversight Board and MNCO, and I'm happy to be here this evening and have this opportunity to connect with you on this very important and timely conversation regarding the use of force. It's vital that we have these discussions as well as review police department policies that impact our communities in such a detrimental way. But before we begin, I have a few housekeeping matters to address. So to participate in our public hearing on COB's policy and advisory report, you can Please limit your comments to three to five minutes. If you prefer to leave a prerecorded statement, you would call 629-255-1906, and we will play it live during this meeting. You can also give a written statement, and you can send your comments to community@nashville.gov, and we'll try to read those statements during this meeting as well. Remember, when you call in, you will be put into the queue. If you're listening to the meeting online, please be sure to silence it before you go on air to avoid feedback. Also, please speak into the phone and do not use your speaker feature, as we usually cannot hear your comments clearly that way. And finally, if you're not able to get through tonight, we encourage you to use the alternative forms of participation, and we look forward to your input into these very important conversations. And so I'm going to now introduce my panelist here with me. His name is Dr. Peter Valier. And so, Dr. Peter Valier, if you would, please join me and tell us a little bit about yourself and why we're here.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fitcher. My name is Peter Valier. I'm the Lead Research Analyst for Metro Nashville Community Oversight. Metro Nashville Community Oversight is the staff department in metro government that supports the Community Oversight Board in their work. My background is I did my PhD at Vanderbilt in sociology, where I studied criminology, and while working on that, volunteered with KIDN's Army to help work on the Driving While Black Report. And after that report, continued researching the police department, investigating traffic stops, searches, and have been doing work on use of force. And I've been with Metro Nashville Community Oversight for just over a year. And I'm very privileged to be able to do this kind of work and have a real impact in the community. And I'm really looking forward to hearing from community members tonight on the policy advisory report that the COB has released for public comment, which is currently in draft form.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. And so, while we're waiting for people to call in, Dr. Valier and I are going to talk a little bit about what the process is as we create policy advisory reports on numerous things, as we begin to review MMPD's policy. And so we're going to talk about that today. So, Dr. Valier, tell us, what is the process of creating a policy advisory report?
So a policy advisory report is developed by the Metro Nashville Community Oversight Department with consultation from the Community Oversight Board members. We go through a process where we have a proposal, and we propose policy research to the Community Oversight Board, and they're able to approve that or help us frame the research that we conduct. And we develop those proposals from a variety of different places. So we can propose those. Board members can ask us to develop research on specific topics. And we also take recommendations from the community. And so, community members can reach out and recommend us to look into specific topics. And once we have developed a proposal, we go, and it's approved by the board, we begin the research process. And so, Metro Nashville Community Oversight has two research analysts, myself and Ms. Liz Roscoe, and we work to really frame the research, to conduct rigorous research, and then draw on best practices from around the nation, and then develop policy recommendations, which we then workshop with board members and within the office with the Executive Director in order to make sure that all of our recommendations are consistent, providing solid evidence, and are beneficial to the police department. And once we have a draft report, the board is able to release that for public comment. This step is very important, where we solicit feedback from organizations, from community members, in order to make sure that community members understand what we're recommending and have the opportunity to tell us where we should improve those recommendations. And that's the process where we are right now with the advisory report based on use of force consent decrees. Once we gather feedback from the community and get written and public comments on those recommendations, we then revise the report based on the recommendations to strengthen those. And that next draft of the report is considered by the board at a special meeting, where they're able to go in-depth into each recommendation and evaluate that and decide whether or not they'd like to issue that. And if the board votes to issue the policy advisory report, those recommendations become board recommendations. And so those are the recommendations of the COB.
And so, thank you for that. And so, if a community member wanted to look and view MMPD's policies to kind of frame their ideas or to get some thoughts on what was out there, is there a way that they are able to have access to MMPD's police manual or their policies?
They do. The police department has their department manual online. And so, on their website, they have a link to the policy manual, and they also have links to roll call trainings, where between the time when the previous manual was published, they have links to the trainings that are given to officers that modify the manual. So, community members can look at what the policies are in order to better understand what the police department, what is within policy in the police department, and that really helps community members see what the police department prioritizes and what they should expect from police officers.
Thank you. So I know that you touched on, a few moments ago, you touched on the process of creating a policy report, and then you also touched a little bit on, you know, how you decide what research, you know, that the community, they can come up with their own ideas on what they think is, they would want us to, like, research regarding MMPD policy or just policing practices in general. But how does MNCO determine what research you want or we want to conduct?
So there's a few ways that we can determine, you know, what directions we should go with research. And one of those, you know, we mentioned from community members, so we do hear from community members on priorities that they have. We try to stay aware of some of the conversations that are happening in the community and trying to figure out or trying to understand where we can be helpful around research and policy. Board members have suggested research topics. Chair Martinez requested a report, which became the first policy advisory report issued by the board, which is on immigration enforcement. And then, we also, as MNCO staff, our office takes complaints from the public, and so we take misconduct allegations, and often involved in those is police policy. And so, we're able to look at the types of complaints that we get in in order to understand some areas of policy that may need to be clarified or changed. And if there are cases where a complaint is exonerated due to policy, and we see that that policy might not be written clearly, we're able to make recommendations or conduct research based on the cases that we receive.
Okay. Thanks. So what is the approval process for a policy advisory report?
So as I mentioned, we go through a number of stages of approval. So internally, within the MNCO's office, we have all of our policy advisory reports evaluated by the research team, the Executive Director and Assistant Director review those. We also have our legal advisor review all of our policy advisory reports to make sure that all of our recommendations are consistent with metro ordinances as well as state and federal law. And once we decide that a policy advisory report is ready to be shared with the board, we go through a board approval process, which involves releasing it for public comment and receiving public comment from the community, revising, and then the board is able to review all of its recommendations and approve or recommend changes to those policy recommendations prior to them becoming official recommendations of the board. So once we get to a place where the board is issuing final recommendations, we've gone through several layers of approval and a pretty rigorous process of making sure that the recommendations are well-supported, they have robust evidence behind them, and that they really would be helpful for the police department to implement, and that they are consistent with state, federal, and local laws.
Okay. Well, for instance, as you were talking about this approval process, I'd like to think about, let's just talk about if something critical happened, like a critical incident. For instance, if, you know, we wanted to address something and move pretty expeditiously, like, what would the process be? Is that a different process, or is it just the same, you know, process where you have many layers?
So when the board worked on developing the process of creating policy advisories, there was an expedited route that was built into the process. And so, by expediting, what we mean is that instead of going through many, more layers of approval, we go directly from releasing the report to getting public feedback and approval. So we're able to, instead of having three meetings, we're able to expedite that in two meetings. And this is actually, we did this earlier this summer with the Eight Can't Wait Report, where we issued three policy recommendations, or the board issued three policy recommendations that were focused on de-escalation, chokeholds, and shooting from vehicles. And that was issued through an expedited process. And so that was a faster process, which allowed the board to issue those without as many steps.
Sorry. Thank you. It's good to know that there's more than one process in place. So tell me, what do you look for when you evaluate policies?
So policies are challenging, right? So policies do many things. But in policing, the policies that we're looking at are administrative policies. And so, these are not laws, these are not criminal laws. The policies are used in the administrative setting in order to, one, they're used to hold officers accountable to that policy. When something is written into the policy manual, that has to be followed, and if it's not followed, then there could be some departmental sanctions. So since it's not criminal, what we're doing is we're focusing on how do these administrative policies help guide officers in making the best choices for the community? And then also, how can community members understand those policies in order to understand what to expect from police? So when I evaluate policies, I look for a few things. I really look at, are they clear, both to officers and the community? Are they comprehensive? So are they really covering what officers need to know as well as community members? So are there gaps in the policy that, you know, officers might know because they've gone through training, but community members might not know because, you know, it's not in training? So we try to look for really clearly-written policies, that where there's not a lot of ambiguity. When there is some ambiguity, so often we talk about officer discretion. So some of the terms really need good definitions behind them. And so we really try to look at, are things being defined clearly, and is it easily understood? So we don't want policies in place where if a community member picks up the manual to try to understand what they should be expecting in a police encounter, to really leave that reading without really fully understanding what the policy is. And I think it's important that policy manuals be written, both with the officers in mind and really clear about the standards that they're going to be held to in their job, but also to community members, so that they really understand how their safety and the public safety is going to be enforced in their city. And I think both of those things are the intended targets of administrative policy.
Thank you for that. Let me ask this question. When a policy, a recommendation, we've made recommendations in the past, and when those are implemented, do they go in and, does MMPD change the entire policy? Like, how do they implement a policy recommendation that we are proposing?
So it depends on the policy, but for the most part, the process would be the Chief of Police determines the policy of the department. And so, if the Chief of Police decides to change policy, what he or she does is they would issue a training to all officers in the department to inform them of a change in policy. And when that change happens, there's often context that needs to be portrayed to officers around the reason for the change, what that really means in practice. And so they will issue a roll call training in those cases. And that goes to all officers at the beginning of their shifts, and they're required to sign off that they heard what, they've heard what, they've read that training, they know what's new in the policy. And so that is the process of updating the policy manual. The policy manual is updated periodically, every couple of years. And so every time there's a policy change, when the manual is updated, those will be written into the new manual.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing all of this process with us. I think the community members have been enlightened on this process. I want to move over into how you came up with this use-of-force policy report. So how did the policy advisory report on the use-of-force consent decrees come to be?
So this policy advisory report, we had originally proposed to conduct a use-of-force analysis, I believe, last November, and that was part of the research that we were conducting. There have been several major events in the past nine months that have changed our priorities. But when the mayor sent a letter to the COB asking for the COB to conduct an independent evaluation of use-of-force policies in Nashville, and we were tasked with deciding how we would do that independent evaluation, and we decided that one of the ways that's important to look at policy is through consent decrees. And so, I'm going to just talk briefly about what consent decrees are. But, so consent decrees are agreements between, or legal agreements, as the result of a civil lawsuit around civil rights violations from a police department. And one of the challenges, and this is a national challenge, is their best practices nationally around use of force are very challenging to identify, and there's a variety of different standards that are used as best practices. And so, trying to identify one single best practice is very challenging, and it's probably not something that can really be done easily. However, consent decrees are really the roadmaps that cities that have had problems in the past have taken in order to bring their departments up to the best practices as defined by the Department of Justice or by federal courts. And so consent decrees are negotiated documents either between the Department of Justice, or in the case of Chicago, the consent decree was negotiated between the Attorney General of Illinois and the city. And they map out pathways in order to make improvements to police departments. And so we saw these as a really helpful way in order to look at what those emerging best practices have been over the past, since 2000. So we looked from 2001, consent decrees in 2001, until the most recent was Chicago in 2019. And we thought that this would be one of the more productive ways to really look at how modern police departments are updating their policies in order to be as up-to-date as possible. And so we decided that we would take that route into evaluating use-of-force policy. And I do think that this is probably one of the better ways to get at what some nationally recognized best practices are for use-of-force policies, but also for investigating, reporting, reviewing uses of force.
Okay. Thank you. And so, one point of clarification, when someone has a consent decree or some department or agency has a consent decree, what's the timeframe for them to come out of the consent decree? Is it a one-year, two-year, or does the Department of Justice make up that time?
Consent decrees are usually open-ended. Recently, there have been some, there have been consent decrees that are more closed-ended or on timeframes. But with large and scope consent decrees, which are the ones that we're evaluating, they've taken police departments, often seven, eight, nine, 10 years, to get to a point where they meet all of the standards that are laid out in the consent decree. And those standards are reflective of what the federal courts say is constitutional policing. And so, prior to any consent decree, the Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division, would go into a department to evaluate any deficiencies in civil rights. And so many of the consent decrees come after investigations that found violations with excessive use of force, unlawful searches and seizures, and those are violations of the Constitution. And in order to remedy those, the consent decrees lay out that pathway in order to make sure that constitutional violations don't happen in the future. And they're often focused on reforming systems, right? So reforming the police department as a whole, rather than on specific instances. And so often, they recommend things like creating specific investigation units, rather than specific, just one investigation that didn't go well. So it's really trying to make sure that the future of those police departments is to uphold constitutional policing. And so, in Nashville, we did not go in to find, you know, constitutional violations. What we were going in to do is what we were trying to understand, what are the emerging practices nationwide of how police departments should use force, as well as evaluate force, report on force, and really try to build out some of those national best practices.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So my next question is, what was the methodology used for this policy advisory report on use-of-force consent decrees?
So what we did, we conducted a qualitative analysis of consent decrees. So we identified consent decrees from several different sources, from Police Executive Research Forum report on consent decrees, from the Department of Justice website, from other written material on consent decrees. And we decided that we would focus on consent decrees that had substantial focus on use of force. So there's several consent decrees that don't focus heavily on use of force, and so they're more focused on other aspects of policing, and we decided that we wouldn't include those. We also did not include consent decrees that were on sheriff's offices and focused on jails, even if there was use-of-force components. And so, once we identified the 14 consent decrees that we would analyze, and we put those into an analysis software, and we apply what's a qualitative analysis to that. And so we read through each one very closely. We categorized all of the information in them in order to look at the trends over time. And so we were able to produce a thematic analysis of what were the major topics that were being covered, as well as what were the specific points within those topics that occurred over the consent decrees. We could also then organize it temporarily. So we wanted to know, how have these changed over time? And so, early on, in 2001, Los Angeles had a consent decree that was not very specific on many issues, but when you look later on in 2014, you had a much more specific consent decree that brought in new issues. And so you could see that some of the earlier consent decrees may not have had some of the common recommendations that were in later ones. So we actually gave precedence to some of the later, more recent consent decrees, since those are really the emerging best practices that have come out of the reform efforts in these different cities.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. I want to just remind viewers at this moment, before we move into the recommendations, I want to remind viewers that we are live now, and the topic of discussion is a public hearing on policy. We're having a public hearing on policy advisory report on the use-of-force consent decrees. And you can leave a statement. You can call in live at 629-255-1907. You can leave a recorded statement at any time at 629-255-1906. Or if you want to just leave a written statement and not call in live or leave a prerecorded one, you can email to community@nashville.gov. So, Dr. Valier, I want to ask you, can you tell me about the recommendations made in this policy advisory report? And let's start at recommendation number one.
Absolutely. So overall, we found that the police department is consistent with most of the recommendations, and so that came from consent decrees. And so we really tried to focus in on some of the areas that there might be some room for improvement. Um, so our first recommendation is that MMPD should review policies, procedures, and training to ensure consistency between policies in the, in the manual and prohibitions that are covered in training. Actions that are against policy because of training should be explicitly stated as prohibited in the MMPD manual. And this recommendation really tries to get at, at the idea that there, that there are, um, that officers receive quite a bit of training about how to use force, when it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate. And that, that information should also be consistent with the policy manual. And there's a few instances that we found that did not necessarily line up with, uh, between those two. And so I think one important one, um, that was actually changed over the summer in, in June and July was on neck holds, on chokeholds and carotid holds. Where, uh, prior to that point, the policy manual did not explicitly prohibit chokeholds or carotid holds, even though chokeholds were against state law. And, uh, they were not taught in the MMPD Training Academy and, and therefore were inconsistent with policy because they were not trained. However, since they weren't in the policy manual, it wasn't clear to community members that this was actually a violation of policy. So if they, if they had experiences, they may not have known that they could have filed a complaint um, against an officer and that that would have been against policy. So that's one example of, of something that we found that we really think that there should be a review of, of the training procedures in order to making sure that that aligns with what the policies are. Another example of that is firing a firearm through a door or window when the target is not clearly in view. That's something that is, that during firearms training, you're trained not to do because you should always know where every single bullet is going. A response, a police officer is responsible for every bullet that leaves their gun. And if you can't see the target, that would be a violation of policy. But this is also how, one, this is also how Breonna Taylor was killed over the summer. And this is not explicit in the firearms policy. So this is one area where there could, where a review might indicate that, that that should be added to the policy manual in order to make sure that it's consistent with, with the training that officers are receiving.
Thank you. And so you told us that was the motivation behind this recommendation. Um, and I think you touched on the benefits of this as well. Can you, so it looks like that we've had a little public comment regarding this first recommendation as well. Um, and I'm gonna read that now. Um, we got some public comment feedback. It says, "Along with simply listing actions that are against policy in a consistent manner, the manual should provide concrete examples that would apply to the most common types of situations, interactions with police to provide additional clarity." And that is from a Mr. Cook. Can you, um, touch a little bit on that, Dr. Valier, on what he's actually implying or wanting?
Yeah, so that is actually a, 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 in many of the policy revisions that you see, you, you often see the police departments offering, um, examples of when something, um, is, when, when the certain de-escalation technique might be appropriate. Um, more often you tend to, you're, you're seeing in policy manuals, uh, explicit definitions of, you know, active listening, right? So active listening is a de-escalation technique. Cause if you, if somebody is in a crisis situation and you're, and you listen to them, and that is a way to de-escalate that situation in order to make that person feel really heard. And that's also a, one of the tenants of procedural justice is listening to a, listening and giving, and having somebody be able to voice their concerns. And so having that really clearly defined as a de-escalation technique in the policy manual, I think is a really helpful comment in order to, um, you know, make sure that those types of things are, have examples behind them, um, as well as are really clearly defined as, you know, so the entire, uh, force continuum is defined within the manual with clear examples of how de-escalation can occur and how force can be minimized.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, was there anything else you wanted to, to touch on for recommendation number one?
Um, I think recommendation one is, you know, that review process is very important and it should be a regular process to make sure that whenever training is, is being updated and adapted, that the rest, that the manual stays current with what's being trained of officers. And I think, so that, um, many of the consent decrees often say that there should be regular review, policy reviews on use of force, um, some recommended annual reviews. There was a, there was another that recommended a, a, a brief annual review and a major every three years to go through a review of policy. And so, so this recommendation is to sort of get the ball rolling of making sure that, that those policies are consistent um, so that officers know those expectations as well as so the community understands what officers, what's expected of officers.
Thank you for that. And I think that you mentioned some issues with the Breonna Taylor case. And I mean, we could talk a little bit more about that at a later date. But this would be, this would be precisely, would fall into having those safeguards and safety nets and a clear, explicit understanding of policy. Um, and I think that that's something that is super important for our, our city so that we don't have those same issues, um, that Louisville is experiencing now. Um, and so moving on to recommendation number two, tell us a little bit about that recommendation.
So the second recommendation, and I'll go ahead and read it. MMPD should implement promotional and annual in-service supervisor training that focuses on conducting use of force investigations. This training should be in addition to the annual in-service training provided to all sworn officers. Recommended training topics include conducting use of force investigations, strategies for effectively directing officers to minimize use of force and to intervene effectively to prevent or stop unreasonable force, incident management, and supporting officers who report unreasonable or unreported force or who are retaliated against for using only reasonable force or attempting to prevent unreasonable force. So it's a little bit of a mouthful in that list. But basically what this recommendation is saying is that we, we are asking officers to conduct, or to conduct investigations or asking supervisors to conduct investigations into use of force. And right now, and I'll, currently, um, for most uses of force, um, except for, um, when deadly force is used. Um, so if, if a deadly force and that's defined as fighting, as a firearm, as using a firearm, um, when there's, or serious injuries occurring, uh, during that use of force. Those are, and all other uses of force are investigated by a supervisor. And so that's often a sergeant who is investigating that use of force. Um, and so they're expected to go to the scene to interview the subject on who the force was used, any witnesses, to take officer statements, to collect evidence, to take photos of any injuries or any evidence at the scene. And they're, they're expected to write a report that evaluates all of that evidence and creates a preliminary determination of whether that, by the preponderance of the evidence, that force was within policy. After they do that report, it's evaluated by the chain of command. And so there's multiple levels of review, um, all the way through, if it happens in, in a precinct, um, through the, through the lieutenant at the precinct, the compliance lieutenant, the packle, as well as the commander of the precinct. And then it goes to, um, through, to the, um, uh, it goes up a level to the office of the Chief of Police and, um, is evaluated and reviewed at that level as well. So there's multiple layers of review that's happened. And so, um, this recommendation is saying that when officers are promoted to sergeant, right now they get training on leadership and management. But they should also be receiving training on how to conduct those investigations. Um, this would, this would probably ensure that those investigations are being done consistently and completely. It would, uh, reduce the number of times that, uh, that reports might have to go back to the supervisor for changes and could possibly streamline the process even better. And having those annual in-services, uh, of supervisors would help them identify areas where those, where they could improve, uh, where there might be need to be changes. And also ensure on a yearly basis that they're receiving the training necessary to really conduct fair and impartial evaluations of their officers. And that is a really important piece of police accountability and is to, is to have fair and impartial investigations. And this recommendation is to really try to enhance the quality of investigations. They're already, um, you know, conducting good investigations that are being reviewed by the chain of command. And this recommendation is to really ensure that, that officers, that the supervisors all have the tools in place to conduct those investigations.
Okay, thank you. So I, to just kind of, um, ask a question and piggyback on something you said. And just to get a clear understanding so that the community knows, when we're talking about these types of use of force, um, can you give us instances on that type of force, like what, what is used? Is it soft hand tactics? Is it your taser? Is it a, you know, a weapon? Like what forms of uses of force are you talking about regarding this?
That's a great question. Um, and what, it's important to understand that use of force happens on a continuum. And so you'll often hear about the, the use of force continuum. And, and, uh, National Police Department, uh, has their continuum laid out from, starting from no force or whether it's very limited force. And so that's, even an officer's presence is, is on the force continuum. And when an officer shows up to a scene, they are exerting some level of coercive force over that situation. That's not what's considered reportable, but at the official presence of an officer in uniform is on the force continuum. As you go up the force continuum, you have, uh, you go from official presence to verbal direction. Where giving a verbal command is, is, is an escalation. And following a verbal command, so if you have active resistance, then you could have what's considered soft empty hand control. And so this is, you know, escort techniques or, or soft takedowns, um, if, if the ground is soft. This could be, um, pressure points or holding somebody, um, tightly in order to make sure they don't get away. Um, so soft techniques are the lowest level of, of force. But many of those are not considered reportable as well. Um, only if soft empty hand control techniques cause an injury or are alleged to cause an injury are those considered a reportable use of force. And anything above soft empty hand control is also considered reportable. So one step above that is considered less lethal weapons. Um, and those include tasers and chemical spray or pepper spray. And, and an escalation above that is, is hard empty hand control. So this would be, um, a punch or a kick. Um, something with a closed fist or closed hand would be hard empty hand control. An escalation above that would be the use of an impact weapon. And so the impact weapon that MMPD uses is the baton. And so the use of a baton as an impact weapon is, is one step below the, the highest level, which is the use of firearms. And so this scale, um, is how officers are trained to think about the appropriate levels of force based on the resistance that they're encountering. So if they're encountering somebody who's very aggressive but doesn't, or aggressively posturing, but doesn't have a weapon on them, they, you know, can use sort of the lower levels on, on, on the force continuum of soft empty hand control, potentially into a, uh, less lethal weapon like a taser. Um, and so they're able to make those judgments based on the resistance that, that they, that they're encountering.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I see that we had a couple of public comments regarding this particular recommendation. So I'm gonna read those. Um, the first one is, "This would certainly be a more in-depth discussion item. My thought suggestion is to provide an explicit summary framework for implementing this recommendation. Specifically, it would include an overview of the templates used for data collection and the formatting of the, the result, the resultant reports, as well as listing excerpts of text of reference material. For example, the Department of Justice guidelines, an outline for the forms of communication between supervisors and officers during training in an investigation, and suggestions for syllabus for this new training." Another comment says, "Trauma-informed policing. In both the recommendation on requiring de-escalation as well as the recommendation for forming crisis intervention teams, CITs, it is important that the training and policy on MMPD reflect best practices in terms of understanding trauma responses. De-escalation and mental health interventions should include practices that are trauma-informed and can effectively de-escalate situations in which people are activated, including officers themselves." So thanks for, go ahead.
I think that, that, that comment gets to, I think, many of the recommendations around, uh, trauma-informed policing. And I think flows very nicely into recommendation three, uh, which is on crisis intervention teams. And so I, I, I'm gonna move to recommendation three, um, since I think that flows nicely, um, which is MMPD should create a crisis intervention team comprised of specially-trained officers for crisis, for, for response to crisis situations. The MMPD manual should comprehensively outline policies, procedures, and roles related to the crisis intervention program, including situation-based guidance for officers responding to the scene of a crisis. Since CIT will require a long-term implementation plan, MMPD should aim to create a budget-neutral plan for developing the program. If additional resources are needed, these should be detailed in a request to the Metro Council for the fiscal year 22 budget.
And so could you tell us more about the crisis intervention teams and how they're implemented within a police department? And then talk a little bit about crisis intervention models that are used around the country and how they work.
Okay. Um, so crisis intervention teams are usually, uh, groups of, are there officers who volunteer, um, or to be specially trained and to be the, to be responders in crisis situations. And those officers go through, uh, depend, in, in the Memphis model, which is the most common model, which started in Memphis in 1988, officers go through a 40-hour training that is very specifically tailored to understanding mental health crisis and responding appropriately and as well as tapping into local resources on mental health. So all officers right now in Nashville do get training on mental health. Uh, so they, they do get some training on how to respond to people in crisis and, and mental health crises. Um, but the crisis intervention team is, is a very, are officers that are highly trained in those specific areas and are volunteers that are specializing in crisis response. So these are often implemented in, in many, in a lot of different departments. And actually in Tennessee, there's 18 different jurisdictions that either have active crisis intervention teams or are in the process of developing crisis intervention teams. And these partner with local organizations in order to, in order to make sure people are getting into the right resources. And right now, uh, the police department partners with, uh, the Mental Health Cooperative in order to, and they have a mobile crisis response team which can come to an incident in order to help intervene in a crisis. As well as they have a, um, treatment center where, where officers can bring someone who's in crisis in order to in order to be evaluated so that someone is not arrested, so they're not put into the jail system, and people are diverted into the mental health resources that they need. And there's multiple different crisis response models nationwide. Crisis intervention teams is one model. Co-response models are another, where often a CIT-trained officer is responding with a civilian mental health professional to crisis situations. And that co-response, you can have both CIT model as well as co-response. You also have models that are all civilian responders. So you have Albuquerque, which is starting a public safety department that has a civilian response model to crisis situations. And they're broader than just mental health. They're all types of crisis. And then you have the Kahoots model that has been talked about quite a bit from Eugene, Oregon, which is a community nonprofit that in 2019 responded to 29,000 calls for service or crisis situations and only had to call police in about 250 of those situations.
Thank you. I'm going to read, we get some really great public comments regarding the CITs. And so I'm going to start by reading one from the CEO of the Mental Health Co-op. It says, "I wanted to comment on number three in the draft report on use of force. I am the CEO of the Mental Health Cooperative. We operate the 24-hour Mobile Crisis Service and the 24-hour Crisis Walk-In and Treatment Center, where police drop off people they have picked up who are in need of mental health assessment and treatment. We wholeheartedly support the policy that the Metro Police Department implement, CIT. We also support a co-response policy whereby a mental health professional who is part of the mobile crisis team accompany the CIT officer on any call involving mental health issues, including drug addiction. We embrace this notion and believe a CIT police force still should have a co-responder who is a mental health professional." And then we have another one. It says, "The CIT should include specific recommendations for fields of expertise that would be consulted for any training, not necessarily limited to mental health. For instance, for example, social work for homelessness, substance abuse, medical professional for physical disability. I feel it would be beneficial, any backup called upon for a crisis situation should include at least one officer fully trained in CIT. The number of officers receiving training should be increased to ensure that this is possible. With regard to the determination as to whether an individual is considered to be mentally ill, the determination should default to an assumption that the individual requires evaluation, encountered only when advised by an expert in psychology psychiatry on site." And then lastly, it says, "Trauma-informed policing. In both the recommendation on requiring de-escalation as well as the recommendation for forming Crisis Intervention Teams, CITs, it is important that the training and policy of MMPD reflect best practices in terms of understanding trauma responses. De-escalation and mental health interventions should include practices that are trauma-informed and can effectively de-escalate situations in which people are activated, including officers themselves." And so, oh, here's one more, sorry. "I do not know the possibility of implementing direct involvement by a non-police expert in active situations, but I would likely prove, but it would likely prove beneficial to either have them available by phone to consult or on-site instead of simply requesting a backup officer on the scene. These considerations match those of the Baltimore Police Department's policy manual as referred to in the COB's draft document." And so, Dr. Valier, you and I have talked a lot about the mental health response and having this because of something that I, you know, also saw and witnessed as I was doing ride-alongs. And so I think it's important, and I really believe that this is, this particular recommendation is really, really helpful to MMPD and should be implemented as well. And so do you have anything else to say about that? Particular recommendation? If not, we'll move right into four.
I think we should move on into four, and I want to be mindful of time, that we only have a few minutes remaining. And so Recommendation Four is that MMPD should categorize all use of force above unresisted handcuffing into three levels that will guide the reporting and investigation of use of force. So as I had talked about a minute, a few minutes ago, the Use of Force Continuum is a wide range of potential uses of force. And right now, the force continuum, or force to be reportable, that force must be above soft empty-hand control or have caused an injury. This recommendation would, is based off of consent decrees where they recommend that force be categorized into three levels. The first level being relatively less force that's being used, which currently are not being tracked in our police department. So that would include soft empty-hand control when there's no allegation of injury. And these could be, the forms used for these can be less in-depth than the form that's being used currently. But these still should be tracked so we can understand them over time, understand what happened, and know what's going on in the future, and track that.
Okay, thank you. And let's hit on the next one, which is Recommendation Number Five, so that we can get through all the recommendations
Absolutely.
before the end of our segment.
All right. So Recommendation Five is that a force investigation team should be created as a branch of the Office of Professional Accountability to investigate criminal and administrative aspects of uses of force resulting in serious injuries, all firearm discharges, misapplications of force, and other serious uses of force as defined by the department. They should also investigate fatal uses of force for violations of administrative standards parallel to the TBI criminal investigation. The unit should receive specialized training in conducting use-of-force investigations into serious uses of force. And so that's the recommendation. The force investigation teams are a emerging best practice nationally and have been recommended in many consent decrees. And what, this is very important because what you're doing is you're creating a specialized unit that has really in-depth expertise in how force is used and is very up-to-date on the policies, on the training, and about how to counsel officers about using force. These are really complicated investigations with different evidentiary standards for criminal versus administrative investigations. And having a force investigation team really allows for those investigations to be fair and impartial and consistent, as well as rigorous. And then finally, the sixth recommendation from the report is that MMPD should track and analyze use-of-force data and create an annual use-of-force report that's available to the public. The analysis in this report should examine the relative frequency and type of force used by officers against individuals in specific demographic categories, examine MMPD's use of force at different times, and identify and address any trends that may warrant changes in policy, procedures, training, tactics, equipment, or practice. And I think this is an important transparency recommendation. I think it's very important that the police department is issuing regular reports, annual reports, as well as having quarterly information on use of force so that the people that are being served can really understand what's going on in the police department and encourage that transparency and accountability and really help the community understand the process.
I agree with you. And so I really want to talk a little bit. I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the public comment that was given regarding this very important recommendation. I mean, all of them are very important. I think, I really believe that when it comes to transparency, Recommendation Number Four and Recommendation Number Six kind of just really hone in on what it is that I think that the community is really needing. So I'm going to talk about the public comment on the annual use-of-force report. So the first comment says, "I wholeheartedly support an annual report on the use of force that maps out use of force across the city in a variety of demographic data." I think this would be a great step towards transparency and accountability. And I think that it could also be a helpful tool in incentivizing de-escalation tactics. Down the road, I could imagine this data being used as a performance target for the department that would be used in the city's budgeting process. Another public comment says, "All regular use-of-force reports, including minimum force incidents published by MMPD, should indicate, but not be limited to, data for all categories in the FBI/CSJIS/UCR National Use-of-Force Data Collection Project. Additional information included would be each incident's NIJ's Use-of-Force Continuum classification as above, as well as de-escalation techniques utilized. Full incident details would not be a requirement for this database. Additional in-depth written explanations and additional details, such as the names of officers, could be reserved for specific individual reports. For use by the COB and the public, use-of-force report data should be published in a common database format. For analysis, and should be searchable and retrievable electronically. Results viewable online via customized templates. Full data available for download. A team of administrative analysts and IT staff, more than one individual, such that there is redundancy, should be trained in updating this database and generating reports. A standardized, easy-to-use database data entry template should be created, as well as standardized display template for charts and graphs used in annual reports. My suggestion is that summary data be reported quarterly instead of annually. A full report with department analysis could be produced on an annual basis. This would ensure that it is understood to be an ongoing requirement and that it is regularly maintained, ensuring that data is entered correctly, et cetera. Also, require that the information be published in a timely manner. For example, within 60 days following the conclusion of each three-month period." And so I think that one of the things that is super important is that, just like they are doing across, I think there's other cities that also have this database. Can you talk a little bit about that and what other cities across the country are doing in regards to data being made public?
Absolutely. There's at least 18 departments that are included in the Police Use-of-Force Data Collection, which is national, it's a project that aims to make data as public as possible. And at least 18 departments are in there, last time I checked. And those link to data that can be downloaded and analyzed on use of force. One really good example of quarterly reports comes from Portland, Oregon. And they actually have an online dashboard on their website where you can look at uses of force every quarter and parse it in different ways. So you can look at the number of people that force was used on. You can look at the number of officers that use force. You can look at a number of force incidents. You can look at the number of force applications. And so you can parse these in different ways to better understand the data. And so I think where a lot of departments are going is creating public, interactive dashboards where people can actually look at the data for themselves. Nashville also has our Open Data Portal, which would be a venue that these data, which are public, use-of-force data, are public, where that public data could be placed in order for people to have access to it.
And so I guess, so thank you for sharing that too, because it's good to know how many people are doing this already. And it's not something that would just be unique to Nashville if we started it. It's something that's ongoing across this country. The other thing is, how difficult would it be to get the data that you need to be able to do something like this?
I think, you know, making data public is relatively simple. We have many public data sets already, and the police department already makes incident data as well as call-for-service data public on the Open Data Portal. So making some of that information public is a relatively simple task. Then the process of creating some of the dashboards that would help with interpretation would take a little bit longer. But I think that's a really important trend that we're seeing nationwide that hopefully as a city, we will be working on and joining.
Okay, great, great. So I think now we're going to wrap up, Dr. Valier. And so do you have any closing remarks before I give mine?
I'd just like to thank the folks who have given us public comment. If you still would like to give us comments on the report, please do feel free to leave a recorded statement or send an email to community@nashville.gov. We always are looking forward to hearing from as many community members as possible on all of our reports and understanding how we can better serve the people of Nashville.
Yes, yes, thank you. So I think this has been a very informative public meeting. I think that sharing, we don't get an opportunity to share like this during our board meetings because we have a very limited amount of time. And of course, our agenda is usually packed. And so I just am very appreciative of the work that you and Ms. Roscoe do as it pertains to the research in our office, as well as handle the IT stuff that you handle as well. So we keep you very busy, Dr. Valier. I also want to thank those who participated, who stayed online with us, and also those who have sent in comments. It's very important that you read over these policies because they affect how policing in this community affects you ultimately. And I just want to remind everyone that you can still provide, just as Dr. Valier said, that feedback. And just to recap a little bit on the recommendations, so we had Recommendation Number One, which is ensuring consistency and clarity as in regards to policy, MMPD policy. And then Number Two, the recommendation is for training the supervisors on the use-of-force investigations. The recommendation Number Three is to implement crisis intervention teams. Recommendation Number Four is to categorize the use of force into three levels, which guides reporting. And then Number Five is, the recommendation Number Five is to create a force investigation team that would operate out of the Office of Professional Accountability. And then Recommendation Number Six, lastly, is, the recommendation is that they should be tracking and analyzing and create an annual report that's made available to the public. And I just kind of summarized those. But the Policy Advisor Report is made available. It is online. And I would just encourage each of you to read over it, to take it in, soak it in, and to give your comments before we move on to approving it in our next special board meeting, which I think is going to be either on the 22nd or 23rd of October. So I want to thank everyone for being here and participating. Thank you, Dr. Valier, for sharing so much information with us, with the community. We appreciate the hard work that you're doing to keep the Community Oversight Board's research going forward. And there's, you know, we have all these lively discussions regarding research and data. So thank you all for being here and have a great evening.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov. or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.